Big daughter, I know you enjoyed all our company together for most of the day. And we've gotten a lot done though, so that's the most important thing. A couple of quick things. Mr. Moss is not going to be in attendance today. He is traveling on business. And I hope y'all see the write-up on our good friend Shannon Kane for the award she got, Robert Pataver. Anyway, now it's time to get on to the deferred comp. Patty, we're spending a lot of time with you.
Yes.
Not deferred comp, we're going on to the comprehensive annual financial report.
Your other favorite subject.
Right, got it.
Go on with the drum roll. Okay, call me shark.
Okay, good afternoon, Mayor, members of council. I'm here today to provide to you an overview of the audit. And I wanted to recognize a couple people. Of course, Linda Ramirez, Gretchen Udome, and I think Greg Busink?
Busink.
Busink is with our auditors. And they were responsible for the audit, but Don Barnett, the controller, Miriam Woodson, and Kevin Kibasa over here put this book together. And it's a big undertaking.
We thank everyone for all your help to make this happen.
We sometimes make this more complicated than we need to. But that being said, I also wanted to point out that the General Assembly requires this year that city manager and the mayor sign off that you got briefed.
And I just did that.
Okay.
They started doing that a few years ago at the bank, too.
Yeah. So, and I think this is as a result of Petersburg issues.
The name's on the line.
Their governing body did not know some of the issues. So, I just wanted to make sure that you knew that it's something different. And today we'll kind of... Okay, who's changing this? You changing it? Okay. Clifton Larson Allen, Mr. Greg Busink will provide his required comments. And then we will provide, the city will provide entity-wide statements in accordance with that famous Gatsby 34, a little bit on the sum of the funds, and a little bit on debt, and a little bit where we are through November. And I also want to turn this over to Greg, and then we'll pick it back up.
Well, we're glad to have you here, sir.
And, yeah, he's got that all set up for you.
Kevin, you got controls, right?
I got it.
All right, cool. Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
My name is Greg Busink. I'm with Clifton Larson Allen. I'm a partner with the firm. Want to point out, this is our first-year engagement for us. So, this is our first year of contract with the city of Virginia Beach. We're also auditing the schools. So, for us for this year, a lot of extra work goes into our first-year engagement. You can imagine getting familiar with the city, understand their systems. So, we want to thank the management for all their help. Very helpful. Internal audit staff was very helpful, too. They helped us get up the learning curve quickly and helped move the process along without any delays this year. So, overview of the auditor's opinion. It's an unmodified opinion. That's a clean opinion. That's what you want. Report on internal control. We had no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies identified. Again, that's what you want. It's a clean opinion on internal control. It's the best form of assurance you can get. This report is the single audit report. Used to be called A-133, now it's called Uniform Grant Guidance. We had no findings within that testing. We test the programs of the cities and the school together. No exceptions noted there. Couple new Gatsby pronouncements for this year. One was related to OPEB. You guys probably heard a lot about OPEB over the years. So, other post-employment benefits. This year was planned reporting. Next year will be the city's reporting. So, that's coming for next year. Note 10, also Gatsby 77 tax abatement disclosure. So, some new disclosures related to tax abatement. Things that the city has done to attract new business in exchange for tax incentives. One thing to keep in mind when you look at the financial statements, there's a lot of information included within the financial statements. So, there's measures discussed, analysis, there's statistical section, a lot of those sections. So, it's important, look at the auditor's opinion to understand what level of assurance we're providing on what section of the cap. It's a big document. It's 300-plus pages. It's a good read, but make sure you're wide awake when you start. And that's me. So, I want to thank you for your help. Just to let you know, we met with the Audit Committee last week, briefed them on some information, made some required communications to them as well. And so, I think that concludes everything I wanted to say today.
Well, Greg, we thank you. Any questions? I mean, yes, sir, Jim.
Well, I just had a comment that I mentioned to you at the Audit Committee. Are you, do you have more to present?
I do.
Okay.
Whenever you'd like to.
Thank you, Greg. And we're glad to have you visiting us today.
I'm just going to take a few minutes, counsel. And I guess the big thing I want to leave you with is that when we presented the unaudited information in October, the fund balance is actually roughly $200,000 better than what we told you then. So, there are no surprises in here.
I think that's pretty good.
Okay. This first slide probably looks pretty imposing. It is, because it's very, very high-level, a lot of numbers here. But what it does is, the municipal corporation is all its pieces. All the funds, including schools, including water and sewer, all the enterprises, anything the city has some control over is rolled into here. So, you know, if you were a, on Wall Street, you would be a $5 billion or $6 billion company. You can see the current assets, which is, the city has a very good cash position, unlike Petersburg. All the capital assets, all those capital projects you do, and those roads, and the schools, and other buildings are reflected in this capital assets. Current liabilities, pension liabilities are now on the entity-wide statement. And we talked about that. And next year, even more things will be shown as liabilities. Long-term liabilities is the bond of debt and compensated appances, things that are really liabilities of the municipal entity. Net position, this is net investment of capital assets, 7.6. That means the capital asset less the associated debt. Restricted cash, so we may have cash that has to be used only for a certain purpose. So, what's left unrestricted is a negative $50.9 million on the city side, a negative $647.9 million on the school side, so almost 700 billion negative. And that represents pretty much your pension liability. And I have to say that Wall Street, the rating agencies fully understand this. We had three rating agency calls last week. As you know, we're getting, we have on your agenda a refunding. There's no issue here because we're paying that liability down. We have a plan in place, and it's being, it's being reduced. I'm going to switch now to the funds, because that's what you're used to seeing. And this is the general fund. Just as I told you before, revenues are about $12.4 million over budget, and expenditures are roughly $43 million under budget. And you can see between the city, the city side is $25.9, the school side is $17.1 million. So, fund balance, after reservations for appropriations that we took out of fund balance for next year's CIP, and encumbrances, and loans, and so forth, $118.4 million. Same chart pretty much you saw before. Real estate, personal property were significantly over budget by $2.65 million. General sales tax was under budget, but it still beat last year's. So, I think that's an important piece to point out. Business license, hotel taxes, meal taxes exceeded their budget greater than last year, great indicator of our local economy. The service charge are under, but so were the associated expenses. So, that's a good message. And the same thing with some of these other local revenues. So, all in all, revenues are within 1.1%. I think that's pretty close budgeting. Total expenditures, is this the right chart? Yeah. The variance on the city side, as I said earlier, is 25.1, which is going to be primarily salaries and fringe benefits, a little bit of savings on debt service. And the schools, the same, so that's the 43 million. And that it does include encumbrances. Little history with fund balance, you've seen this chart before, the 118.4 is the highest in this, since 2008, of course, because some inflation has been as well. School operating fund, you've seen this one before, too. Revenues under budget by 3.7, expenditures under budget by 20.8, so school reversion 17.1. And we, of course, program that to be returned to the schools. Water and sewer, $8 million additional revenue than budget, and 18.6 under expended, mostly in debt service and operating expenses. Stormwater, pretty much on budget, it's a $40 million operation, and almost all of it was spent.
You notice they didn't put a balance sheet on the water and utility fund?
Yeah. Hundred, hundred and some, 111 million, or something like that.
Thank you.
Not that we're counting. Okay. Waste Management Enterprise, you know, this is a fairly new enterprise fund, relatively speaking, and that is supplemented with the transfer from the general fund, support the tipping fees, the waste disposal costs. Tourism investment, I'm just showing that just to see that net change were $6.5 million to the good, so fund balance is now 13.5 million. Okay. Outstanding debt, right now, we, 100, $1,228 million total debt. Tax support is 9.27, 300 is self-supporting with fees. I do expect that we will have another bond sale soon, but we do have to get through our refunding first. Okay. In summary, we are at 10.5% of next year's revenues, and reservations are included, you know, the Waste Management Fund, school reversion is at 20.2, which includes that revenue sharing. General Fund revenues were within 1.1%, as I said earlier, so very close, still better than last year by 4.1%. And general fund expenditures were 3.8% under budget. And pension liabilities, this is important, I think, to stress. There's two different ways that are used to calculate the pension liability. And I think, I think in September, I gave you a memo, but I still see some people are commenting on it. And I wanted to point out that Gatsby requires us to sort of mark, to market whatever your most recent returns, that's how you calculate your discount. And so, and it's a year behind. So, 2016 was a poor performance year for VRS, and so that Gatsby liability went up. We do know that FY '17 performance was way high, so when we get to this point next year, that Gatsby liability could shift the other way, and probably will. Then there's the calculation based on the actuarial method that snooze out over five-year periods, and it sets rates. And in that rate setting, amortize the unfunded liability. I think there's 26 years left to go on that. So, there's, that is what the agencies are looking at, is you're chipping away at that liability. It's not being ignored. We're paying the full amount as required by VRS. Okay. Is that the last one? Oh, excuse me. The November. We have collected $379.4 million, and we paid out $504.5 million. So, the message is, we're exactly where we're supposed to be for November. A better measure will be at the end of December, when we've got our full one-half-year real estate taxes, kind of, we'll start to see a better picture. But that is one of the reasons to have a good fund balance, to kind of carry you through those early months when the cash flow is not, is there. And so, this is sort of the trend line for expenses, and you see where we are right now. And here's the trend line for revenues, and you can see where we are right now. So, we're exactly where we need to be. We still need to collect a lot. Lot can happen. Business license is a large revenue that's due in March. And of course, June is a lot of money that's due. So, all these are trending. Sales tax, hotel tax, meal tax, right now are trending above where they haven't been. And of course, department expenditures are higher because we've got more costs. Okay, is that it? Okay, next, we'll be back in January to show you where we are for December. March, well, you'll have the budget, and the budget adoption and the cycle starts all over again.
Yes, sir, Mr. Jones.
On those, on the pension liability, does that take into account the federal government's new mortality guidelines?
They, I have to check on whether they reflect that or not. They have made adjustments in all of the actuarial assumptions over the last year or so, and so my suspicion is they are, but I can verify it for you.
Just like to know.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
I've got a question for Greg, not our wonderful finance director.
Okay.
Look at it, current assets to total liabilities, that's, you know, as a business person, that's pretty important. Government's a bit different, but how would you rate our current position to total liabilities?
Do you have the slides? Sort of a quick ratio kind of thing? It looks pretty good. And the biggest piece, when you look at your liabilities, your long-term liabilities are really what impact the city or debt and the pension liabilities. But I think overall, looking at current, about, what's that, $100 million over, roughly? So, I think it's pretty good for a government, I think. You're staying even where you need to be. I think it looks, I don't see any issues with it.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Yeah. And...
Jim.
I want to add to that, that unlike some governments, we pay, we pay off our debt rapidly. 75% is within, what, 13, 14, 15 years?
I was going to think it was a pretty strong statement, is what I was getting to.
Yeah, right.
Okay, Jim?
Thanks. And Don Barnett presented this to the Audit Committee last week, I guess. And there's just two, two issues I noted back in the statistical section that they assure me is not reflected in the, in the main meat of the budget. One, they're listing as capital assets, 46 ambulances, and as we know, the city doesn't own any ambulances. And then there was another issue, they had a list of EMS calls that's listed under fire, and that number is significantly off. And the, apparently, that's, that's going to be resolved eventually. But, but the one issue about the 46 ambulances was of concern, because if that's listed as an asset in the main part of it, then that's, that's...
I don't think they are. No. I think they just plugged in the numbers. Yeah. They're not.
Great. Any other questions or comments?
I would like to add one point, if I may, about the item on your agenda for the bonds authorization for the refunding. And talking with our financial advisors last night, if we do some adjustments on the maturity dates, we can increase our savings. You know, in other words, I think it's either the April or the June, if I remember right. And so, we're going to be asking you to do a substitute resolution to authorize us to do that.
You just get it to us, we'll be glad to take care of it for you.
Yeah, I think that Dana has got that right here.
Okay, Dana, you going to get that passed out?
You can do it now, or you can do it when you're doing your agenda review.
Make sure the vice mayor has that, please.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments? I would just, I want to say one thing to Patty and her wonderful staff. You know, we talk about wanting great schools and a great police department, which we have, and other great things in the city. We couldn't have it if we weren't financially sound. And the way y'all keep track of this money is absolutely critical, and we thank y'all for the hard work, okay?
Thank you. You know, Trump's tax bill pushed us to do this refunding. And I'm not going to say what I think the savings will be, but because the market is, supply and demand is just doing some strange things. So, could be great, could be not as great, but we, if we were to sell today, the savings will be quite large. Because the yields on tax-exempt stuff has gone down, surprisingly. Where taxable's gone up.
I wonder why. Okay. Thank you very much. We'll now move on to the quarterly flood control, storm program update, buddy.
Yes, sir. Mayor, members of council, as requested, we're providing you your quarterly flood control project update. And Tony Alger is our senior PE in charge of the new Stormwater Center of Excellence, and she's here to give you the first of two stormwater briefings today.
Fine, you know, we're glad to have you here. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Turn it off. Okay. All right, good afternoon. I was here 11 weeks ago, giving you the first quarterly briefing on the 10 flood control projects in the CIP. These are the 10 projects. And the, currently, they're all on schedule, with the exception of Central Resort District Drainage Improvements, which is not currently funded. Aragona Drainage Improvements, if you recall, this project involves upsizing pipes and adding drainage inlets to a neighborhood that was constructed in the 1950s. Currently, the stormwater system is undersized and does not meet today's standards. The project is under design and approximately 50% complete. And the second quarter activities for this project include, we continue to model the area south of Haygood Road and west of Aragona Boulevard. In my last briefing, I discussed with you how we expanded the scope of the project to include this additional area. So, we're finishing up the modeling on that now. And as I mentioned, the design is ongoing and almost, approximately 50% complete. We are on schedule and expected to advertise for construction in July. Asheville Park Drainage Improvements, this project will add a new stormwater pump station, two new stormwater management ponds, a gated control structure at Flanagan's Lane, and we will add a box culvert at the intersection of New Bridge Road and Sandbridge Road. The improvements I just described to you are called Phase 1, and they are approximately $8.2 million. The second quarter activities for this include, we continue to pump down the lakes in advance of any forecasted significant rainfall event. That is three inches in 24 hours. The gated control structure design is complete. We are waiting the final permit from DEQ, and we're coordinating with Dominion Power. The Phase 1 preliminary design is underway. We expect to have that in a couple weeks. And we've met with the developer in October, and we have another meeting with him this week to further discuss cost participating on the improvements. Central Resort District Drainage Improvements, I just briefed you on this on November 21st. I just want to point out that at that time, I mentioned there were two interim projects that were identified in the analysis. The first project is approximately $15 million, and that will redirect stormwater from the intersection of 21st Street and Baltic Avenue to the 16th Street Pump Station. And the second one was to replace a 42-inch pipe under 24th Street with a box culvert or a bridge for approximately $5 million. We did receive a draft analysis, we were evaluating the potential for a stormwater management pond at the visitor center. We're reviewing that draft, and at this time, there are no other further activities scheduled. Chub Lake and Lake Bradford, this project is actually a compilation of three projects that experienced flooding. It's the Lake Chub, Bradford Lake area, the Hollis Road area, and the Church Point area. We're in the middle of doing the detailed analysis to determine some early implementation projects. However, we do know that the ultimate improvement will involve large box culverts under Northampton Boulevard, Pleasure House Road, and Shore Drive. We continue to coordinate with the Navy to open the weir gate when major storm events are forecasted. Public Works Operations has cleared the ditch from Lake Bradford to Nider Boulevard, that's right there at Boone Clinic. The remaining work is to remove sediment buildup between Nider Boulevard and the culvert at Boone Clinic. There's emergent wetlands in this ditch, so we had to apply for a permit, and we expect to have that approval in January. The preliminary stormwater model is complete and under review, and that's important because we need that to continue with the next phase to determine those early implementation Eastern Shore Drive Drainage Phase 1, this project will involve four pump stations and improvements in the Cape Henry Canal. Last time, I mentioned to you that the Cape Henry Canal sluice gates were completed. The next phase of improvements in the Cape Henry Canal include a new box culvert between Ebtide Road and West Great Neck Road. We hope to begin construction on that in July, and that estimated cost is approximately $8 million. And the Cape Henry Canal Drainage Improvements provide an improved outfall for the Shore Drive Phase 3 roadway project. And in addition, we are acquiring a parcel at the corner of Page Avenue for a few, future pump station, and the roadway project is acquiring that as part of their project, and those appraisals are underway. Sherwood Lake Drainage Improvement, this project will include a new pump station with intake and outfall pipes and a pipe connection between the two lakes. While the pump station is being designed, Public Works Operations is keeping the water surface elevation at 3. The design for the permanent pump station, including the interconnect pipe, is approximately 90% complete. The design for the pump station vault, the lake intake pipe and outfall pipe is complete. We're going to combine those two projects together into one bid package and expect to bid that in the spring. Real Estate is working with the HOA on a right-of-entry agreement and easement plat for the outfall pipe, and we're also finalizing the environmental permit. Windsor Woods, Princess Anne Plaza, and the lakes. The last time I briefed you on this, I talked to you about the detailed engineering analysis that we're having developed to determine the specific program of flood control measures that's needed for this project. That analysis is still underway. We expect to get that in the summer of 2018. In the meantime, we've been very busy on this project. We were, we assisted the Office of Emergency Management, applied for flood mitigation assistant grants. We submitted three projects in Windsor Woods and Princess Anne Plaza, and they are listed here, South Plaza Trail, Old Forge Road, and Kings Point Court. All three of these projects include upsizing the stormwater pipes to convey stormwater to Presidential Canal. This grant is 75% local, 25%, oh, sorry, 75% federal, 25% local.
Did we get it?
We haven't heard yet. They have not made the award on that yet. We are also evaluating the use of the temporary commercial flood barriers, and Councilman Wood mentioned this in my last briefing, so we are looking at that. We have received the draft stormwater management models for these neighborhoods, and those models were able to identify 15 early implementation projects for these neighborhoods. So, we determined that we needed to do some initial screening on those 15 projects to determine whether they actually were early implementation projects. And we came up with these three criteria that they needed to meet. The first was, can the project be started in 12 months and completed within three years? Does the project provide independent beneficial flood relief? And are the project costs within the CIP budget? This next slide shows the first, the initial 15 projects, and when we applied the three criteria from the previous slide, we eliminated seven of them, and we're further evaluating the remaining eight. Now, just because we eliminated them from the list doesn't mean they're not going to be included in the full solution for these neighborhoods. They just weren't classified as early implementation projects. So, the number one project that met all three of the criteria is the Clubhouse Road Pipe Replacement and Outfall Channel Improvement Project. This project will install 1,400 linear feet of 48-inch storm drain, and it'll also improve the drainage channel across hole number two on the Bow Creek Golf Course. We are right now in the midst of a feasibility analysis for that project. We hope to have that in a couple weeks. In October, we had a coordination meeting with Public Works Operations and Parks and Recreation to discuss cleaning the ditch on the Bow Creek Golf Course. They're scheduling a snag and drag of that ditch in January. And we also discussed cleaning the storm drains on Elmont Road, which they did in November. And we had a public utilities kickoff coordination meeting on November 7. And this week, we expect to get the final stormwater model for the three neighborhoods. And in addition, we continue to... And in addition, we continue to meet with the Civic League regularly. We're meeting with them tonight. We keep them up to date on the status of these projects. Okay, the next few projects are the active projects of the canals that are being dredged in Windsor Woods and Princess Anne Plaza. The first one, Windsor Woods Canal, this notice to proceed was given in June of 2017. We expect to be done in June of 2018. This is project cost of $2 million. The North Gate Ditch Project, this project is comprised of four segments, a north, south, east, and west segment. The south segment is complete, and that's the photo you see here. The rest, the remaining segments are expected to be complete in January for a cost of $2 million. The Windsor Oaks West One Project, the project was given notice to proceed in June, and this project is complete. Total project cost was $700,000, and there was 4,218 cubic yards of dredged material Windsor Oaks West Two, notice to proceed was given July. We expect to have construction complete in January for an estimated cost of $850,000. And finally, Windsor Oaks West Three, this project was supposed to start construction in October. We ran into some issues requiring right-of-entry agreements and easements with some property owners, so we're expected to start this project in January, and we hope to have it complete in August for an estimated cost of $650,000. And finally, the Stormwater Master Planning Analysis and Modeling. This project, as I mentioned to you previously, as with any major infrastructure system in the city, it's important to know what you have and how it performs. So that's what this project is doing. And I'm going to let CJ go into more detail about some other things that this project is doing for the city, and I'm just going to go over the schedule for you. So the Lynn Haven Watershed will be complete by the spring. All the watersheds in Lynn Haven will be done by the spring, March of 2018. Little Creek Watersheds should be complete by September of 2018. The Atlantic Ocean Watershed should be done by January of 2019. The Elizabeth River Watersheds, Watershed Two will be complete in April 2018, and the remainder of the watershed will be complete in February of 2019. And in the Southern Rivers Watershed, Watersheds Nine and Ten, originally I had stated last briefing, they would be complete by the end of the year. We have had a lot of data gaps in these watersheds and have had to send out survey crews to fill in the data gaps, so they're delayed a little bit until the spring. Watershed Twelve will be complete in June of 2018, and the rest of the watershed will be done by February of 2019. And with that, I'll take questions.
Thank you very much. Questions or comments before we move on to modeling? Barbara?
Well, I still am concerned about the Asheville Park project and moving forward with that because of the, I guess, question about development participation, what that would mean as far as how much more development is going to be able to be built there. It's still a very difficult thing to answer. But now, that's in Watershed Nine, which now, or Basin, whatever you call it, Nine, which is not going to be finished by the end of the year. It won't be finished until, is the fact that that's not complete have any bearing on what that project would be?
No, ma'am. The watershed modeling for Asheville Park is being done as part of the preliminary engineering analysis. We expect to have that by the end of the year. That's not being held up by Watershed Nine.
So you don't have the full watershed? Because I'm still not convinced that this watershed to the south of that, Watershed Twenty-Three, which I guess isn't going to be complete until February of 2019, doesn't have some impact? I mean, the Asheville Park project, I know you all say it doesn't, but everybody that lives there says it does on all that happens in this other watershed. And the fact that that's so much behind, I just am, I'm not comfortable still that we're not getting it right, or how we're going to get it right. So I'll just put that in because I know that's a decision to be made in the future, but I still, and the difficult thing, I guess, these projects that you just reported on, they're the ones that are in the CIP.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm assuming that list is going to change once we get more information from the sea level rise reports and also the stormwater modeling reports, because, you know, I look at that, and I look at, what is it, 60% of the city is in the southern watersheds, and only two of these projects are in the southern watershed, and they're both directly responsible for, because of mistakes that were made by the developers. And that's really hard to explain to all of these other folks who also are experiencing flooding. And I think our CIP was pretty much directed toward areas that flooded from Matthew. Of course, this area can flood when we don't even have a drop of rain. And, you know, how we're going to address all these things, and this area is also has some pretty high-profile development projects to come to us in the near future. And I just don't know how we're going to make those decisions until we have this information. And I'm just kind of putting this on the record so you all will know where I am. But the southern watersheds is different from the Chesapeake, and we've got a long way to get to the point where we're, I'm comfortable, and I can explain to the people down here really what's happening and what's going to happen.
Thank you very much. Yes, sir.
I would just like to compliment Ms. Henley for teeing up our next briefing, because, quite frankly, we on staff...
Set up.
It's not a setup.
Okay, Barbara.
We on staff fully recognize that you on council will rely upon the professional engineers, both in the Center of Excellence and Public Works and the professional engineers that are reviewing site plans in the DFC, to give you some validation that the engineering plans that are submitted by builders and developers are going to not flood downstream and are going to preserve the quality of the neighborhoods that they're going to build. And that is the whole dilemma that we, as a city, are faced with going forward. And if we are to remain the preferred coastal community, coastal city on the East Coast of the United States, we have to engineer our solutions. And what Tony's talking about here, and CJ's going to get you down into the weeds, and Tom's going to lead you through a conversation today, is how are we going to validate that what we are experiencing and what we're dealing with in the aftermath of decisions that were approved and the climate change upon us and the projected sea level rise that we face? How are we going to provide you the assurances, the engineering assurances, that you can make positive decisions to continue to promote investments and to advance the residential portion and the business portion of our city? And so this process that we're into, this modeling process, is essential, and it started before Hurricane Matthew. We committed to this before Hurricane Matthew, when we had recurrent flooding in Asheville Park, and we could not get to a resolution with the engineers. And so we committed those funds out of the Stormwater Fund to move forward and commence this recalibration of our master drainage plan. And so we've come up with those 31 drainage areas. And so what you'll be reassured, Ms. Henley, is that any engineering, any development that will occur in a project will be modeled and will not, at the 100-year storm, will not displace or flood thy neighbor. And that is a critical portion that is way beyond just what V S M P requires at the state level. And Tom is going to address this level of fidelity that we must guarantee going forward before you all are going to be really comfortable in trying to make decisions that could possibly jeopardize the neighborhoods and those adjacent drainage areas, just as you said.
That's a great introduction to Tom Blakey.
You've got some real skeptic here.
Okay, change your mind, Tom.
Well, I will just say, with Asheville and Sherwood, our approach is, is to build more storage onsite and have small pumps that are pumping out between rainstorms, not during rainstorms, so that we can pump the storage down, and so that storage is there to catch the rainfall when it does rain. The pumps themselves are very small relative to what runs off in these big, big storms. So we've been trying to explain that to some of the people out there with various levels of success.
Yeah, but the difficulty gets to be, is the taxpayer going to have to pay to allow the rest of that development to occur, which should have been done right the first time and paid for by the developer? It's the rest of the development that's yet to come that I think is really causing a lot of the rub, but we'll talk about that.
Yes, ma'am. So we've got a lot of people here today, so I'd like to make some introductions. You all know them, but I still feel like I need to go through that. With planning, we have Barry Frankenfield, the Director of Planning and Community Development, Nancy McIntyre, who's the Development Services Center Administrator, and Seth Edwards, who is the supervisor for the DFC Engineering. With Public Works, you've met, well, you met Tony Alger, our Stormwater Engineering Center Administrator. We have CJ Bodnar. He is our project manager for Stormwater Master Planning. He's also going to talk to you a little bit today about sea level rise and rainfall data. We have Mike Monday, also with Stormwater Engineering. Now, we have two people that unfortunately are here for, I think, their last meeting. They represent a combined 80 years of dedication to the city and the development and building and maintaining of the infrastructure in the city. So we have John Fowler, our city engineer, and Phil Davenport, the Director of Public Works.
We're glad to have you all here, and we do thank you very much for everything you've done for this city.
They've both given their better part of their lives to dedicate to the city. All right, so sea level rise, increasing rainfall intensity, aging infrastructure that was built on old standards that aren't appropriate today, and infill development have all combined to create this situation of reoccurring flooding and reduced stormwater performance in many, many parts of the city. If you'll forgive the very overused pun, it's a perfect storm of issues coming together to cause these problems. No laughing? Okay. So anyway, it's getting very, very difficult to find workable stormwater solutions for new development that won't cause some impact either upstream, downstream, or to adjacent neighbors. Site plan design review requirements have not changed, but higher tailwater, and that means the higher seawaters and ocean waters and groundwater that these stormwater systems discharge to, these higher tailwaters, and these increased precipitations are making it very difficult to get plans approved for many projects, particularly if they're at low elevation or poorly drained properties. So last week, Public Works and Planning met with members of the development community to discuss these issues. Going forward, we let them know that plans and projects and plans are going to be subject to a lot more scrutiny. And certain, what I'll call, I guess, alternative paths through the regulations aren't going to, that have functioned in the past and have made maybe the job easier for the design engineer and his client. A lot of those paths are not going to be available going forward in the future because they simply don't work for these poorly drained and very low-lying areas. That, of course, the development community did not view that information as a Christmas present. So given the fact that we could tell by the body language in the room that it wasn't, they weren't happy to hear all of this and what the future may hold, we felt it was important that we would come and brief you today on what we briefed them on last week, so that when you started hearing it from them, you'd also have heard it from us first. So I'm going to introduce, well, we just had to introduce Tony, but I'm going to bring Tony Alger back up here. Tony and CJ are going to give you half of this presentation, where they're going to talk a little bit about the science and engineering that we have done and why these, it's going to be more difficult going forward in the future. And then Seth Edwards is going to come up and tell you how that's going to work in the DSC. So Tony?
Tony, we welcome you back.
Thank you. Okay, in May, when Council approved the $300 million, 15-year stormwater program, the city manager announced that a core group of engineers in the city engineers' office would become the city's subject matter experts on stormwater and flooding. So consequently, Dave Hanson created the Stormwater Center of Excellence, which we're calling the Stormwater Engineering Center. So this engineering center is tasked with providing stormwater consultation and stormwater review to the DSC for those private development plans that have complex stormwater issues associated with them. The center reviews the hydrologic and hydraulic information, the calculations, the studies provided by the development engineer, and we determine whether the drainage will work. And what I mean by that is that that's design meets the requirements of the city's standards and specifications, and it just does not adversely affect properties adjacent to upstream or downstream to their project. Now, the DSC remains the plan approving authority for the city. In addition, the center is responsible for the management of the major flood control projects that I just briefed you on. We're also managing the ongoing initiative of the city's comprehensive response to sea level rise and recurrent flooding, and we're managing the development of the city's stormwater management master plan. Now, we know there are areas in the city that are complex, and they have complex drainage issues, and those are listed on this slide right here. And we are in the process of creating these stormwater management models to better understand how the stormwater systems work in these areas. So in the future, public and private projects in these areas will have to consider existing and future conditions like sea level rise and rainfall intensity. And with that, I'm going to introduce CJ Bodnar. He's a member of the Stormwater Engineering Center, and he's going to discuss increasing rainfall and sea level rise.
CJ, you're welcome here.
Thank you, sir. So the Stormwater Master Plan, the last time it was updated was actually the first time it was created, the late 80s, beginning of the 90s. It has not been updated since then. So one of the things I want to say before I get into why we're doing an update, I'd like to say the reason we're not doing this update, to provide more requirements for the development community. We're actually looking at it as a way that we could provide some benefit to the development community to help them be able to solve these complicated stormwater issues that we're dealing with. So why should we do the master plan updates? As you know, the stormwater system is a city infrastructure system, just like our roads, our water lines, our sewer lines. And as with any infrastructure system, you need an accurate inventory to be able to properly manage that system. So we're updating the inventory. As Tony said earlier, we've got survey crews out, finding pipes that we don't know anything about, getting inverts, pipe diameters, so we can update the GIS and be able to update our models to have the best information available. The master plan updates are actually creating a computer model that models the system and models how it performs, just like we would have hydraulic analysis for the water lines that tells you what the pressure in the system is, or pump station models that tell you what the capacity of the pump stations are. We're coming up with that same type of model for the stormwater system. We're able to use these models to assess the city's, the system's performance and be able to identify any deficiencies. So we can assess the performance based on the system's ability to perform during a design storm event. Those are the two-year storm, the 10-year storm, the 100-year storm events. A byproduct of this model is we're actually able to go into various specific nodes and be able to determine what's known as the maximum water surface elevation. That's the elevation that is the highest point that it reaches in that model. So one of the things we're able to do with that is provide that to the development community as a courtesy for them to be able to use as their starting tailwater. When we do that, that saves them time and money. They don't have to go actually calculate down to where the tailwater is and do the hydraulic analysis up. We're doing that for them to any pipe that is 24 inches in diameter or larger. The current regulations actually say that you have to use either the starting tailwater elevation and bring your hydraulic grade line up, or use .8D plus the invert of the pipe to determine what your elevation would be for your starting tailwater. You've got to use whichever one's higher. That's what the requirement is in the regulations. Those regulations are not changing. If a consulting engineer says, we're not, we disagree with your number, we think it's not appropriate for our situation, they can still do the calculation the same way they would be required by the current Public Works standards and specs, to be able to come up with the tailwater, submit it to us, and if we agree that that's what's appropriate for a project... what's appropriate for a project, we'll approve using that tail water. The final major benefit that we have for this is for regulatory compliance. We have an MS4 permit with the, uh, state, and one of the, uh, one of the parts of the regulations say that you can actually, uh, create comprehensive stormwater management plans for the city of Virginia Beach that give alternative, uh, an alternative way of analyzing channel protection and flood, flood control on projects. We're actually working with DEQ on one of those right now to, uh, be able to use the swim models we're creating to look at channel protection and possibly eliminate what's known as the energy balance equation from having to being performed by consulting engineers. Uh, to give you a comparison, uh, the previous, the model on the left, the diagram, is what the 1990 model looked like. It was very simplistic. It covered basically the major channels. Uh, it covered culverts under roads, but didn't look at what happened with the storm system inside of any single subdivision. The picture on the right is, is Basin 8, which is the Alice Creek watershed, uh, and that is actually a completed model that we have finished. And we are, as I said earlier, we're analyzing any pipe 24 inches in diameter or larger. We're analyzing all the ditches that would be in this, in the water, in the basin. We're analyzing overland flow patterns where water, if it reaches a certain elevation, can go to another node, and we're including all that in the model and using the city's GIS and LiDAR to be able to create the subcatchments and create the impervious area percentage. The results that are provided allows us to create a GIS map that shows us where flooding occurs based on, uh, any particular rainfall event that we run through the model. This is, again, the same watershed, watershed 8, uh, and this is the 100-year storm event. So it's that storm that has a 1% chance of happening anytime during the course of a year. Uh, and it shows, the color ramp on the left shows you the blues is zero to a half a foot of flooding. It goes all the way up to red, where there's more than two foot of flooding, and the majority of where you see the red is, is actually down in Alice Creek itself. Uh, I would like to point out the bottom left portion, right here, is actually NAS Oceana. Uh, we did meet with them back in March to show them what we had in the way of modeling, to try to work with them, to confirm what we have in the way of modeling, if it's showing what actually occurs at the base. And they said, "Yeah, those are the areas we have flooding that occurs when we have projects." We are using, uh, that to the best information we can to be able to make sure we have an accurate model. In regards to sea level rise, uh, we are developing a comprehensive response plan to sea level rise. We, uh, that is a three-phase project. Uh, we are in Phase 2, which is looking at adaptation strategies, how to be able to protect the city. Uh, you had a presentation, uh, I think it was about a couple of months ago, from Brian, Dr. Brian Batten, showing you what the hazard, uh, assessment was that they performed with Phase 1. Uh, the other part of Phase 2 is we're actually doing public outreach. Uh, we have seven public meetings that we're holding throughout the city during the month of December and January, uh, where people can come out and tell us their flood stories, tell us what their tolerance for flooding is. You know, if there's two inches of water in, in the gutter pan, is that too much for you? Or if it's six inches, what, what is your level of, uh, comfort? We have had three of those meetings, Kempsville High School, Cox High School, and Cook Elementary School. We've had about 40 or 50 people show up to each one, would like to have more show up as we go forward. Uh, the other thing that Tom mentioned was changes in rainfall precipitation data. Uh, when it came to you all back in August, we mentioned we had a, Dewberry doing a study for us. That study is complete, uh, and the final report will be in an upcoming package for you all, uh, for your council package briefing. What it shows is, what we found is that the NOAA, uh, Atlas 14, which describes how much rainfall falls, only goes through the year 2000. So any storm we've had since 2000 up to 2016 is not included in the NOAA Atlas. So we had, uh, Dewberry look at three different ways to look at it. They looked at just the Norfolk rain gauge. They looked at any rain gauge within 60 miles of Virginia Beach, and they looked at every rain gauge within 150 miles of the coast from Boston to the central part of Florida. And all of those gauges are showing the same thing. We're getting more rainfall than what the chart says you're supposed to have. So we, uh, one of the recommendations that Dewberry's making in this report is that we increase our rainfall depths for each one of the storm events by 20%. Currently, with their study, they're showing it is 10% higher right now than what the NOAA chart shows, where we're gonna recommend going to 20% above that because new projects that come online, we're expecting the houses to be there 50 years down the road. If we've had a 10% increase in the last 20 years, I think it's reasonable to say 20% over the next 40 years is probably reasonable also. And all of this will be incorporated into an update to our city, uh, stormwater standards. We are in the process of updating the Public Works Standards and Specifications. Uh, we're looking to bring that to you in the summer of next year, uh, and we will be including as part of that these rainfall depth increases for, uh, for the design storms. Uh, we are gonna put a part in there about sea level rise, but we're not gonna apply anything regarding sea level rise at this point in time until the adaptation studies are done. We don't think it's appropriate to tell people, "You gotta design for a foot and a half," if we find a strategy that will let them be able to be protected without them having to design for it. Uh, and that is what I have to speak to you on stormwater management, uh, modeling, so I'm gonna turn it over to Seth to talk about what the actual design requirements are through DSC.
Thank you, CJ.
Do we know when NOAA is gonna have that updated?
We're hearing it's either 2022 or 2025.
Thank you.
We're not, not positive, though.
If, if they're funded.
If they're funded.
Seth, we're glad to have you.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, everybody. As CJ said, that was a great overview of mainly what the city's doing with our Stormwater Master Drainage Study. My portion is more designed towards what the development community needs to do in order to get a site plan approved for new development. I'm gonna be leaning a lot on this meeting handout, which all of you should have in your packet, which has a lot of the finer details as far as what's needed for a new site plan. And since it's a lot of specific details, I'm gonna try and go over it quickly for the sake of time and stick mainly to the pieces that we've had a lot of questions on. But by all means, if there's anything you see in here that you specifically have a question on, slow me up, stop me down, and ask a question. So we started with page 2, some frequently asked questions about a preliminary stormwater engineering analysis, which is required anytime there's a discretionary approval for a project and, or in the southern watersheds. Just common questions like, "When is it needed? Why is it needed? What is needed?" You can see on pages 3 and 4 of this handout, goes through a lot of those criteria we put together to give the development community months ago. Specific issues have come up in Sections 3 with GH and I, which piggybacks a lot of what CJ was just talking about, uh, with the tail water requirements, the sea level rise requirements, and the updated rainfall amount requirements. These are all requirements that are only being installed and required for preliminary design at this point, and I think that's one of the things we intended to do was make sure it was clear that that was set up in a preliminary section and not included in the section for every design at this point. As far as the final stormwater management plan is concerned, this was mainly set up to clarify the roles of the Stormwater Engineering Center compared to the DSC. There will still be the agency that all developers talk to, come through for their approvals, and we'll do all of the city coordination, uh, as far as when's the site plan required, what exactly is required, but most of this is information that's been around for two and a half years. We just wanted to try and get it in one place so that it's more easily accessible and make sure everybody understands that we are looking at the same things for each person. Then we go into some of the actual state guidelines, such as, uh, the erosion and sediment control laws. I wanted to point out this one piece that says, "Properties and waterways downstream from development sites shall be protected from sediment deposition, erosion, and damage due to increases in volume, velocity, or peak flow rates of stormwater runoff for the stated frequency storm of a 24-hour duration in accordance with the following standards and criteria." The next piece says, "Concentrated stormwater runoff leaving a development site shall be discharged directly into an adequate natural or man-made receiving channel, pipe, or storm sewer system. For those sites where runoff is discharged into a pipe or pipe system, downstream stability analyses at the outfall of the pipe or pipe system shall be performed." And that ties in a lot with the tail, tailwater requirements that we have and comes straight from the state ENS requirements. The next section went over the difference between grandfathered projects, which would be under stormwater design from previous or prior to July 1, 2014, or non-grandfathered projects, which is just the standard project now. Again, these are just, uh, localizing and centralizing of the state requirements and was not anything that we've gotten much questions about. Then we put together a lot of the city requirements wherein some of the questions have come up specifically regarding the tail water, which we've mentioned before, is required by the, uh, it's referenced in the state erosion and sediment control requirements, and also just, uh, in various ASHTO and, uh, VDOT requirements as far as how to determine the downstream tail water. The design methods, people have had questions requiring, or regarding the type of storm, be it 24-hour or rational method, and that was mentioned in the ENS guidelines as well. Those were the main pieces.
Go back to that slide right there. What, what is the current, uh, I guess, design standard for a 24-hour storm event?
It differs between the year storm, if it's a one-year, two-year, 10-year, and those are set up by NOAA. As CJ said, that's what's required by the state. We also have a set in our Public Works Standards, and then we have another set that CJ referenced.
What are the Public Works Standards right now? If you were taking a plan through approval process right now, what would the current study standard?
It's essentially three inches for a one-year storm, six inches for a 10-year storm.
Would be like a 10-year storm?
Yeah, and nine inches for a 100-year storm. And at that point, we opened it up for questions and wanted to rephrase our summary points.
Great. We got some questions. Jim Wood and Barbara Henley.
I don't, I don't know if y'all have these answers, Tom, or, or who would, but, um, the, the impact of these changes on the cost of development, there, there should be some feedback on that or some way to measure that. So, so that, that's the first question. And then the second question I have is impact on land, if, if, if these projects have rendered any land either undevelopable that, that previously were developable or just can't feasibly be developed because of the, of the cost. And I don't expect you to have those, those answers now, but if, if there's some way that we're looking at that or some information we can get, because that, that's my, my, my big concern on this.
Barbara?
Uh, somewhere in there I heard southern watersheds. But was your presentation directed more towards southern watersheds? A lot of it?
Those are applicable all throughout the city, except for the preliminary analysis is only applied to the southern watersheds projects at this point and other various significant projects.
Until you get these modeling studies done, Henry, how, how can you do that? I mean, you, you aren't gonna be doing this, the modeling for the southern area until the last, which will be about the end of completion. So what do we do in the meantime if we don't have those modeling studies done?
In the meantime, what we use is the best available information, so we'll take information either from the 1990 CDM Smith study. We'll use information from FEMA, from their flood insurance studies and flood insurance rate maps, and we can take whatever information we have already through draft models and our survey information to try and get the best information available.
And so when they complete one of the watersheds, the modeling, and they calibrate it, and calibration means that they wait until we get one of those three-inchers and they go out and they do on-the-site, uh, measurement of what the impacts are in the stormwater to make sure that it's really doing what the model says, and they have a level of confidence. Once they calibrate that watershed, it's stamped as viable, and, and we're using that as the most recent, uh, science that we've got to be able to go forth and provide that information to those developers so that they can give that to their engineers and do their math based on that. But until then, we are set with a, with whatever we can grab that is, uh, genuinely accepted amongst the engineering community as the best information available.
I can tell you, the confidence level in the engineers is pretty low, uh, given what happened to Nashville Park. And, and I'm still not hearing from anybody who just lives down there any great confidence that anything is going to be any better. Uh, you know, okay, so you've got all of that, which was supposed to have been right, and look what's happening, and look how much we, who are paying our stormwater fee, all of our money is going to go to build these systems that were supposed to have been put in by the developers, but now aren't working, so, and we don't have anything. I mean, when we look at, at the, the rest of the southern watersheds, there's nothing. And, uh, and then when I look at this sea level rise map, that's where the heaviest impact's gonna be, is in the southern watersheds, and it's really, really hard to explain to folks why we can continue to develop in these same places that we know good and well are gonna flood because they already flood just with a heavy wind tide, so you know it's gonna flood when you got wind tide plus these heavy rainfalls we're getting now. And, and it's just, uh, it's, it's not easy to, to make these explanations. So I'm really worried because I see a potential for maybe the January Planning Commission of another development that's in an area that I think is extremely susceptible to future flooding. How are we going to make decisions between now and then and be able to assure the public with any, any confidence at all that it's not gonna flood and they're not gonna be called upon to come back and put in a system that will, will improve it? Like I say, right now, the confidence level is very, very low down south. So just to pass that on for you, and, and, and with me, to be able to, to tell people with any confidence that, "Hey, we're gonna be able to fix this."
Well, one piece of confidence that you can get for that Planning Commission agenda item would be that anything going through that discretionary approval is being analyzed with the higher rainfall amounts, and we're putting into account all the tail water reviews that we've, uh, discussed in the, in the rest of this meeting, and also having them at least show what would happen with one and a half feet of sea level rise. So it might not necessarily be designed to meet 100% of our standards with sea level rise, but we are requiring that it's shown what will happen.
And then what if the developer comes in with the questions that Jim was just asking? "Hey, you've just raised my cost of development so that I, it's not feasible." Are we gonna say, "Oh gee, we're gonna have to do something about, we're gonna have to make it feasible for you to develop, so therefore we're not gonna require these development standards." I mean, aren't we gonna get into that kind of stuff?
They will want to engage us in that conversation, Ms. Henley, but these are PEs. These, these guys and gals, they have an ethics, and they won't jeopardize their career or the livelihood of their families to, to not come forth with the true impacts of what the design is. Only the developer can figure out his return on investment and whether or not he can make a buck in the deal that he wants to make. But we will hold true to the engineering solutions necessary to meet these requirements to not flood what they're building and not impact the downstream or adjacent neighbors.
So that the engineers are going to be telling us, and then it will be up to the political body to have the political will to stick with that requirement.
I guess, Ms. Henley, that's why you hired me, to be your manager, and to validate the, the truthfulness and the accuracy and the systems by which we are gonna go put the Center of Excellence to work. We will not be a sustainable coastal city unless we validate that we can engineer the solutions to deal with sea level rise and to deal with climate change. And we are staking our reputations and my reputation that we can create engineered solutions to deal with these threats that we face, because we must reassure the elected body, when you make a decision, that the best science and the best engineering are being applied for your decision-making.
Ms. Map, you've got a great challenge.
Well, we do. I, we didn't say it'd be easy. Ten years ago, we weren't having this.
I got Bobby Dyer, Ben, and Jim Wood.
Uh, thank you, and, and believe me, I appreciate the task and the challenge that our city manager and the engineers have going forward, you know, especially with this problem. But I just wanna raise a couple other points, and I guess, uh, you know, it comes to a number of frustrations, especially we identified in the Process Improvement Committee with just trying to get to yes and improve the planning process in the city. This has been an ongoing challenge for years in terms of getting to yes, in terms of, you know, getting things out in a timely fashion and efficient fashion, and a collaboration with the development community and the city. And the point is, though, and what, while I agree with this, and I think it really comes down to market competitiveness, too, that we have to weigh into our decision process. Are we going to price ourselves out of the market? For instance, are other cities doing similar things to the point, because, I'm gonna be honest with you, it was brought up before, you know, there's a feeling that some folks feel that dealing with the city of Virginia Beach is a significant challenge. is a significant challenge, and maybe some folks are not coming here because of these obstacles and barriers that we put into. So the point is, though, can we somehow, you know, street define a happy medium of, you know, communication and collaboration to create the win-win? And right now, I get a sense within, you know, the development community and some that really that, you know, some of their concerns are not really being addressed as of yet. But the point is, though, I appreciate the challenge. A couple of the areas you designated were in my district. I understand the need for that. But by the same token, you know, can we really? Don't forget, the price gets passed on to the consumer, you know, eventually. And would that be prohibitive, you know, stifling, you know, to where we want to be in the city? But the point is, I'm just saying, let's strive to find that happy medium and really get to the point, Mr. Manager, you and I agree on, we've got to get to be in a city of yes that makes people want to come here.
Ben.
I'd just like to say, first of all, you know, I applaud Manager Hanson and the staff for being proactive with stormwater. I think that the rating agencies are out there calling for us to be leaders, and they're watching every step that we're doing. I do have some concerns, some major concerns, with this entire presentation and the quickness with which it's being brought forward. You know, I've never been a fan of knee-jerk reactions. You know, you have assured us that this isn't just a knee-jerk reaction to Hurricane Matthew. And I do have some concerns with just talking about, you know, it's up to the developer and the development industry to, I guess, you know, figure out if it's a feasible process. What we're talking about is lowering land prices, and that's ultimately what's going to happen here, not to mention killing an entire industry in the City of Virginia Beach that employs a substantial amount of people. We're talking about real estate agents. We're talking about mortgage brokers. We're talking about the development industry and builders and all the related subcontractors. And so, you know, I want your word, Dave, that we are going to work with the private sector to find compromises here because, you know, one of the things that we talk about is, you know, this is, you know, certainly an issue that we have to deal with. Now, you know, the question becomes, what is the public's threshold for pain to mitigate these risks? And what I see here, I have serious concern about, and it seems very heavy-handed to me, to be perfectly candid at first blush when I looked at this. And I do want your assurances that this is not set in stone and that we are going to work with the private sector to make sure that we come up with reasonable compromises to address this important issue.
I think that's what the staff is working towards. They're working on a model that can be provided to the engineering companies and the developers and the builders. I think this development that has come upon us in just the last 10 years is shocking to their business plans.
Because it would kill it.
And their longevity.
Yeah.
We didn't create sea level rise.
Sure.
And we didn't create the data that we're showing you that shows a 10% increase in rainfall. And the staff is not building something that if you build to their standard, would have prevented Hurricane Matthew.
Well, that's the exact point that I'm trying to make here. There is even with what y'all are talking about with going from a 10 to 100, which is a very, very substantial change, would that have prevented Matthew?
Well, they always have to have been able to handle the 100-year stormwater, and that's not a new thing. And I think you should hear from your city engineer, who's about to retire, who is the, you know, he's the godfather of PEs in the City of Virginia Beach. And there are certain, there are certain standards by which you are required to meet.
Absolutely.
And so I am dealing, on behalf of you, the council, a set of circumstances that raised its head over a period of time before Matthew in the Sherwood Lakes, in Windsor Woods, in Plaza, in Ashville Park, that we have recognized for well over the dozen years that I've worked for the City of Virginia Beach. And when I came on board, these teams, both in DSC and in Public Works, said, we need to get busy. And so we have collaborated, the staff and the city council, to work the stormwater fee, to create the funding source, and we have worked it from what was about $12 million to a $40 million financing stream that is allowing us to deal with so much more than you ever contemplated that we could do. And this isn't, this, the deal making that you and Mr. Dyer and Mr. Wood are asking me to take under is, at some point, when I tell you we're not recommending approval because it will flood downstream, and that is an engineer honest opinion. It doesn't mean that I want to disapprove a project. It means that project will have flooding. Those people that are going to use their very last dime to mortgage themselves into a house, and they're in an area, and this is a young family, and they can't afford to live in the high ground because the high ground is expensive, and they went to the new development in the low ground. And we compromised a mathematical formula that was built on science, designed in engineering, and constructed according to that engineering plan and validated by the inspectors, and we flooded out families. Our reputation will never recover.
But Dave, the point that I'm making is, if we jumped to do something every time a mistake was made, and I think that we all agree there were mistakes made in the specific example that you're talking about, and if we made policy based on those types of mistakes, we would shut this city down in terms of business. And I think that there's a compromise that has to be come to.
But we are not changing the policy. Please understand, everybody here has told you in about three different ways.
Sounds like adding a layer.
No, we are not adding a layer. We are not increasing the requirements.
And I think you made that pretty clear.
We are, we are just saying, look, guys, the deal that you've been using, .8D of the invert pipe size is one number that you like to lean on. When the new tailwater of what sea level rise is and what stormwater is giving you is much bigger, the law says you must use the larger.
And I have the utmost faith in you, and I have the utmost faith in all the staff that we're going to do the right thing here and that we're going to make sure that we compromise and make sure that this works for everybody.
Is that what's going to happen? Did you want to say something?
And I agree with basically everything Ben said. I think the staff does a phenomenal job on this stuff, generally speaking. The leadership under Phil and John, and we're sorry to see both of you go because the professionalism that you've brought to the city is outstanding, and I think that's something we should all be very proud of. I will say, we are changing here. I mean, it's, we are changing. It's not quite the same. What concerns me is I look at these things, and I look at a lot of this stuff as draft and preliminary, and we're going through, and we're still requiring the design community or the development community to kind of tie into these standards that aren't really, don't look like they're really quite gelled completely. And I would point out that we do have great PEs on staff, but keeping in mind that the private sector, people that are working on these things are also PEs, who also have the same ethical standards and professional responsibilities and that sort of thing. So I don't think the city owns the moral PE high ground here. I think both sides. And Barbara, is here, yeah, there were major mistakes made on those two projects. The one, we had major mistakes made in a project back in the '70s, the one that we spent all that money on over in your district, Bobby.
Rosemont.
Rosemont, yeah. And so that's, and that was probably a mistake on both city and private sector side. So I would just say that we need, as Bobby said, we need to get to be a yes answer here because we can't, we can't have a knee-jerk reaction that may not, at the end of the day, work as well. And as Ben said, you know, if this isn't going to defeat the effects of a Matthew, then we need to make sure people understand that to begin with. But I think the other thing is, I would second what Ben said in terms of, we need to continue to work with the private sector, the development community on this because we can't just shut it down. We've got to come up with ways to do it. I guess we need to appoint that Stormwater Board, Appeals Board, sooner rather than later. And I can go from there, so that's my comments.
Barbara, you have something?
Yeah, I just want to say, sometimes maybe the answer has to be no. Some places are just not suitable. We have to recognize that. And yes, it might cause some property values not to have, but there may be other ways that we address those things, that we can come forward of compensating property owners in some fashion rather than allowing building there just so they can get a property value that we know good and well it's going to flood because we cannot continue to build in places where we know that the people who buy those houses are going to have flooding problems. So, yeah, we've got to, and both sides are going to have to give a little bit here because, I mean, if it's undeniable that there are places that are going to flood, then we have to accept that, and somebody's going to have to accept it. And so there may be other uses that are better than building structures there. So there's a lot to be done, but I think everybody has to go into it with an open mind and really get the scientific data. And that's why my point is, until we've gotten all this data, we've finished these studies, we've done the modeling, we really don't want to barrel ahead and, just to keep things moving, allow things to happen before we get this data. I think we really need this data first, particularly down south because it's a different animal than what everybody was used to in the Chesapeake watershed. We don't have any topography. We're flat, we're high water table, we're poorly drained soils, and that's not necessarily a good place to do a lot of development. So let's just get the work done first, and then we can go forward.
All right, great conversation. Yes, ma'am.
I just have a quick question. As far as the modeling goes, you said that this was going to be made more available to the developers, that they could utilize it. How much of it will be available to just the general consumer?
I'm not sure at this point. Do you have anything for that, CJ?
We haven't even thought about somebody from the public wanting to...
To be honest with you, it comes in a highly complex stormwater modeling program that the general public almost completely would not be able to use. At this point, we're just using it on an as-needed basis with the developers, where they'll come to us, and if they have a project where we have the information, our Stormwater Engineering Center will set up a model for them that they can use. If needed, I'm sure that that information is public knowledge, and it wouldn't be difficult for the public to get.
I just think maybe moving, not obviously right now, but long-term, thinking about having some kind of public-friendly version of this so that the consumer, when they're making their decisions...
Certainly would be. You're exactly right. All right, we're running out of time. So anything else on this? I think we have a lot more discussions on this in the days to come. And I think this has been a great, healthy discussion, and I say that very honestly. So I'm going to move on then.
Yes, sir, please do.
Okay. Any city council comments? Very good. How about let's go to the agenda review? We've found out we have a few speakers, so we're going to see what we can do.
First, under ordinances and resolutions, looks like we need to vote separately on item 2D.
No speakers on that yet.
We also, we have speakers on item four, under ordinances and resolutions. Both A and B. And we also have speakers on item six.
We have speakers now, and three that just came in not long ago.
Number three? Okay.
Been a long day already, huh?
I thought we were approved.
So...
Okay, folks.
The other...
Everybody okay?
Everybody okay with everything else on the...
Can I just review it with you, Mr. Vice Mayor, please? Okay. Item number three will be pulled, item number four will be pulled, and item...
Yeah.
Yeah, you did. Someone told us. Okay.
You told us. The speaker.
Okay. Item number four will not be pulled.
Wait, there's no speakers on four.
So let me confirm one more time. I'm sorry. Item number three will be pulled, item number six will be pulled under ordinances. Everything else is on consent. Is that correct?
At 2D.
For ordinances, 2D, I'll be voting no.
Okay, well, 2D's being pulled. My mistake. I'm glad you...
2D's being pulled.
So item four under ordinances does not have speakers. Item four under planning does.
I haven't gotten there yet. Okay, planning, let's go.
Okay. Under planning, Spence Crossing LLC, Centerville.
No problem.
Item two, under planning, Lynn Haven District, Bonnie Road.
That's fine.
I'm abstaining on that.
Item three, City of Virginia Beach Department of Aquariums and Museums, Beach District, Mr. Ern.
Consent, please, Mr. Vice Mayor, for your project.
Item four, City of Virginia Beach, ordinances to adopt and cooperate the interfacility traffic area. Vicinity master plan. And B, amended and revised the following sections. Plan use, 2016 Virginia Beach contract, the plan, plan use map and so forth. Any speakers on both of them?
Yes, sir, for that one, see.
Okay, so under planning, if I could, Mr. Vice Mayor, item number one, consent. Item number two, consent. Item number three, consent. Item four, C, consent. Okay. Also, council, if you remember, at the end of the meeting, we're going to take just a couple minutes to say happy holidays and merry Christmas to the world. Okay? All right. Thank you very much. I'm going to ask the Vice Mayor, I'm going to have to abstain on something in the, you know, those.
Exactly.
Everyone taking a motion to recess into a closed session pursuant to the exemptions from open and allowed by section 2.2-3711A. Code of Virginia is amended for the following purposes. Publicly held property, discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for public purpose or of the disposition of publicly held property where discussion and open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body pursuant to section 2.2-3711A3. Beach District, Lynn Haven District, and Kempsville District. Legal matters, consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel pursuant to section 2.2-3711A7, Wichita Road School Board Property Tax Exemptions. Personnel matters, discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, G motions, salaries, disengagement, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body pursuant to section 2.2-3711A1. Council appointments, council, boards, commissions, committees, authorities, agencies, and appointees.
So moved.
Second.
Call the role, Madam Clerk.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Mrs. Payne. Aye. Mr. Moss. Mr. Ern. Mrs. Wilson. Aye. Mr. Wood.
Aye.
Mr. Fair Jones.
Aye.
Do I abstain on everything, or just?
Aye with two extensions.
Yeah, aye with an extension on two items.
Okay, I'm abstainer to two items.
Good, you're going to keep it straight.
Yeah, thank you.